Get on there to tell us what, tell people what to do. Don't have a clue what they're doing.
We can spread out. Not that I don't usually.
But I wouldn't say much of this group is doing that. They're notorious for it.
Hey, Chris.
And they're good at it.
Oh, thank you. A while ago, we got about six and a half.
Yeah, I knew Vinny Cordes back when he owned a party store. We used to go to the, in high school, we'd go to the festival.
I think Dave Rushing's gonna do at least a committee.
Health and Human Services.
Hello.
I would like to call the Human Services Committee to order.
We have, uh, let's delete them. Say yes.
Let's delete them. The flag of the United States of America. It stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Angie.
Present.
Commissioner Beeden. Commissioner Torello.
Present.
Commissioner Semasko.
Here.
Commissioner Zeller.
Present.
Commissioner Beedenbosch.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here. Can I have a motion to adjourn? No wait.
So moved.
All right, two. Can I have a motion to, uh, any additions or deletions or a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Can I have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. We don't have that many, but we do have a few citizens wishing to be heard. And I'll start with, uh, Mr. David Hoffman.
David Hoffman, Fort Grashit. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me the privilege to speak this evening, and I'd like to begin with a word of prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here today for this commissioner's meeting, come with humble hearts, seeking your wisdom and guidance. We ask for your moral clarity in the discussions and decisions, that these decisions, they serve our community effectively and justly according to your word. Amen. As a pastor of the community, I would like to go on record by saying I'm gravely concerned at the moral compass of our public school education system. A recent survey disguised as a school climate survey was given to our high school students with questions centered on sexual identity and, and the probing of young minds. Questions asked go far beyond the pale, are privacy intrusive, and trample on the First Amendment rights of the students and parents, I might add. Because this is a state mandated questionnaire, these type of questions do nothing more than lay the groundwork for disengaging parental control of our students. This survey delves into the psyche of our, uh, children in a latent manner masked as something other than what it really is. Therefore, the public education system has now crossed the barrier of teaching STEM subjects to our children and do now delving into their psychological makeup. It is therefore my supposition that you consider positioning Dr. Nevin as the sole leadership at the county health department and consolidating Ms. King's position. As such, he could file with the state a medical statement of psychological health detriment on behalf of our county based on gender dysphoria and confusion to our youth caused by these types of surveys, thereby circumventing the state mandate for meddling in your children's mental well-being and telling the state to mind their own business. That's the end. Thank you.
All right. Uh, next, Paul Urban. After that, it'll be Ken. After Paul.
Good evening, board. My name is Paul Urban, and I would like to take a moment to express my gratitude for consideration, my application for the St. Clair County Health Advisory Board. I'm honored to have the opportunity to potentially join this important board that serves our community. It is essential that this board and its members serve the interests of the people of St. Clair County. The board must ensure that the voices of our community members are heard and represented. Transparency is vital, and I believe it is crucial that we share the backgrounds of all appointed individuals. Decisions are always more effective when they are grounded in open dialogue and research. I would also like to point out that according to the bylaws of this board, there is no requirement for members or potential members such as myself to hold a medical degree or medical license. This aligns with statutory law, confirming the diverse perspectives and value, and value in our discussions and decision-making processes. Public Act 368 of 1978, better known as the Public Health Code, grants power to local health departments, but it is the responsibility of the Health Advisory Board to advocate for the interests of the peop, to the people. This board should ensure that community voices are incorporated in order to guide the department toward what is generally best for our residents. Effective departments are those that operate in collaboration with advisory boards, ensuring that operations remain in check and focused on the needs of the community. It is also vital to recognize that the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is one of the largest funded departments in the state, and because of this, it is often beneficial for local health departments to operate with independence, allowing the advisory board and the department to implement or advise on services operations tailored to our specific county needs without lancing breathing down our neck. The most effective departments and advisory boards understand and apply to law while allowing individuals and families to make the choices that best serve their lives. It is my hope to contribute to a collaborative environment where community members feel empowered through discussions and decisions within this advisory board. I thank you all for your consideration, and I look forward to working together to enhance the health and quality of the life of our citizens here. Thank you.
Okay, Ken. Uh, after Ken, Don Falk.
Hello, my name is Ken Hugman. I also want to thank you for accepting my application for the Advisory Board of Health. I previously sat representing District One on the Board of Health until my previous employer deemed it a conflict of interest. Um, I no longer work with that organization, so I am now not a conflict of interest. Uh, I was on the board from 2022 through 2024. Um, professionally, I work as a licensed professional counselor and a certified advanced alcohol and drug counselor. Uh, just this year, I was recognized by the State of Michigan and internationally as the Advanced Alcohol and Drug Counselor of the Year. Um, with the county, I've spent time previously, again, on the board, also working with the Health Department, uh, as a leader on the Community Health Improvement Plan, or CHIP. I worked with the Health Department and other community partners within this community to develop our overdose fatality review team, which made us the 10th county to have one of those in the state. I also work with the county specifically, uh, as a member of the opioid advisory commission to help advise as a consultant for spending of opioid settlement dollars, um, working both with a larger body and then with that in-county treatment subcommittee. Um, previously for six years, I worked as the Chair of the Substance Use Prevention, Treatment, and Recovery Work Group for St. Clair County through the community services coordinating body, and then additionally worked with a previous employer to expand access to naloxone across St. Clair County, uh, with the benefit of Port Huron itself in a two-year timeframe, watching the responses for overdose drop by 66% in two years. My goals of sitting on the board are to make sure that it's well represented from individuals from a multitude of disciplines. Uh, having an individual with a mental health background feels beneficial to me. There are, as far as I am aware, unless one of the newer members is, there is not someone with experience working with the substance use disorder population, which is a primary focus of some of the departments within the Health Department. Um, my goal is to make sure that we protect our citizen autonomy, to make sure that we protect our environment, and then to promote evidence-based practices across the board. Thank you.
After Don, it'll be Carol Miller.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Falk, and I'm from Port Huron Township. I, uh, am very respectfully requesting reappointment to the Advisory Board of Health. It's been an honor to serve on this board for the last two and a half years. I remain committed to advancing the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of St. Clair County. I bring to this board a lifetime of public service. I proudly served in the United States Coast Guard as a corpsman for five and a half years and was honorably discharged at the end of my enlistment. My military service is one of the greatest privileges of my life. It shaped my discipline, my integrity, and my dedication to putting community first, values I carry with me to every professional role that followed. As a military spouse, I continue to work in the health, in healthcare while supporting my husband's service. Whether stationed in Italy or at Coast Guard units throughout our country, including Alaska, I made it a priority to stay in the medical field at every duty station that my husband was assigned to, working as a medical assistant, gaining hand, getting, uh, gaining hands-on experience and strengthening my clinical knowledge. I also earned an associate's degree in science while we were stationed in Florida. After settling here in St. Clair County 30 years ago, I went back to school at SC4 and enrolled in the Associate's Degree of Nursing program and graduated with honors. I then worked as a med search nur, med search nurse at Port Huron Hospital on 5 East. I held a concurrent position, uh, at the Women's Wellness Department, assisting with surgical procedures, conducting breast exams, and teaching women proper self-exam techniques. After that, I worked with Blue Water Hospice and Premier Hospice, caring for patients and their families with compassion and professionalism at some of the most difficult moments of their lives. Today, I have the privilege of serving as Port Huron Township trustee. This role has strengthened my understanding of local governance and reinforced how critical strong public health policy is to a healthy and thriving community. My combined experience as a veteran, a healthcare professional, and a local elected official gives me a unique perspective on the challenges and opportunities facing our county. I would be very honored to continue to serve on the Advisory Board of Health. Thank you for your consideration.
Uh, Tracy, you'll be next.
Good evening, everybody. Over the past several years, I've watched the Board of Health face increasingly complex issues. As a result, I believe it's more important than ever that board members demonstrate certain core qualities, an understanding of the Open Meetings Act, familiarity with Robert's Rules of Order, consistent meeting preparation, and a clear grasp of the Health Department's true role, which is a public health, not primary care department. In reviewing applicants, I focused on observable behaviors, professional histories, and how well each candidate aligns with these expectations. I have seen some long-serving members who, despite their tenure, appear less engaged, come unprepared, or struggle with procedural and statutory requirements. This affects meeting efficiency and can lead to decisions that are not fully informed by best practices or by legal framework that govern public bodies. We watched one candidate angrily read a letter prior to his departure from the ABOH against maintaining Dr. Nevin as medical director. This attitude is not needed, as we have seen this attitude and what it can lead to. I have also reviewed candidates whose interests or professional focus fall more into personal wellness or nutrition that would better suit food inspection standards rather than the ABOH. There are also applicants who consistently demonstrate preparedness, research, and understanding of the Health Department's mission and professional during professionalism during meetings. These are individuals who know the OMA, understand Robert's Rules, and come ready to engage in discussion and show respect for public input and transparent governance. They contribute meaningful insights, approach issues with balance, and who understand the importance of parental involvement, community partnership, and evidence-based public health practice. There are applicants with strong professional and clinical backgrounds, including licensed practitioners with clean records and not expired or flawed licenses, who bring a working understanding of patient care and interdepartmental communication. These skill sets are especially important. Finally, I have also observed concerns regarding professionalism conduct from one certain individual seeking appointment, issues such as repeated confrontational behavior, dismissiveness toward colleagues or commissioners, or bringing racial division into discussions and does not contribute, contribute to a constructive or safe environment for dialogue. Consistent anger or aggression, especially toward other public officials, undermines public trust and the effectiveness of the board. I hope you all consider these qualities when making appointments. I encourage you to all to appoint Mr. Paul Urban and Mrs., Ms. Justine Schrader, and reappoint Dr. Stephen Smith, Mrs. Dawn Falk for the open appointments for the ABOH. Thank you for your community support.
After Tracy, Justine Schrader.
Hello. Um, when I was preparing what I thought would be something that would be substantial that I would want to bring to you all, I started to look into what the Michigan Health Department, um, their statutes, their ideas, their ideology, and their responsibilities for the people of St. Clair County, and I found them very interesting. When I found those, I found that it said, uh, then I went on to Google, and it said that when I looked for Michigan Health Departments, it said, it gave me a list of the things that the Health Department was supposed to do and that they were in charge of. And number one was protecting public health, and that could be tracking or controlling infectious disease. Uh, two was, um, environmental health and safety, and that could be restaurant inspections as well as septic inspections. And number three would be community health prevention, and that would be immunizations, lead testing, health education outreach. Um, number four was emergency preparedness. Public health nursing was number five. Number six was vital records. And all of those things that I read, and they gave subtopics, and they were trying to describe what all of those subtopics fell under, absolutely none of them were primary care. Um, no Michigan Health Departments are intended to function as primary care clinics. Um, they may be limited, um, what I did read and found is that they did say that it may be limited to clinical services, but those public health-driven are not primary care clinics. Um, examples of those were STD testing, immunizations, family planning, TB testing, HIV services. These are targeted for a population and health services, not general care. Primary care is provided by primary, or private physicians, federally qualified health centers, um, hospital systems, and urgent care systems. In short, a health department protects the health of the community, a primary care clinic treats individual patients. They are not the same, and Michigan law treats them differently. I'd like to refer to that email that I saw September, dated September 24th, when the, um, Health Director refers to the Board of Health as according to their ideology. I feel the board in St. Clair County should reflect the people's values. How could we ever be wrong in serving the people and using their values? To me, that would be an easy, it would be a no-brainer. We would know that we were going forward, and we are protecting the people here in St. Clair County. And I just hope that you'll think about that when you choose your people that will go on that Health Advisory Board. It's so important. Thank you.
And I'm, I think I'm gonna get your name wrong. Uh, is that Malik Constover? Is that close? Or you're next.
Not even close.
Hello, everyone. My name's Justine Schrader. I'm a nurse practitioner working in the area. Um, and I just wanted to introduce myself as I'm applying for a, as a member-at-large in the Health Advisory Board. Please forgive me, I am not a public speaker, as I will now demonstrate. Okay. Um, my history is I, I have experience in both primary care for adolescents, adults, you know, senior population, as well as medical aesthetics. Prior to becoming a nurse practitioner, I was a registered nurse, uh, working in surgery, the circulator, and a scrub thereafter in the emergency room, um, and then the intensive care unit, uh, at Port Huron slash McLaren Hospital, and as well as Lake Shore Surgery Center. Um, I became a registered nurse in 2010, acquiring my ADN from SU4, and immediately going to U of M Flint, acquiring my BSN. While in the process of, uh, finishing up my BSN, I was fortunate enough to become a recipient of a federal grant to become nurse practitioner, which was based on academics and experience. Again, that was at U of M Flint. While at SU4, I was co-chair of the ADN Nursing Committee in 2009 to 2010, as well as representative for the ADN Student and Nurse Faculty Advisory Committee during that time. And I am currently also a member of the American Association of Nurse Practitioners. So I've been a nurse practitioner since 2015. I'm also a business owner in the area, um, since, for the past four years. Um, with the, uh, primary care, I've worked in both Port Huron and Yale, and I can assure you I know a lot of our health concerns within our community, which is ever evolving. Uh, while working at my business, I continue, continued until January of this year, for the past 10 years, working for national diagnostic services, doing health assessments for various companies throughout Michigan, um, as well as the fire departments throughout the state of Michigan as well. Uh, the reasons that I'm interested in serving, uh, on this committee is largely because of the community impact regarding health, our local health issues, and appropriate health education. Um, and I believe that I would be able to, uh, give a perspective that would, uh, enhance any health-related field knowledge that may help guide decisions based on evidence and best practices, which in turn may potentially influence policy within our community. Um, and I think, I think that's probably all I really want to say. But thank you for your time.
Next will be Joseph Hayes. If you would, because I didn't get your name right, would you?
That's fine. Good afternoon, Marion Stewart. Uh, apologize for the bad handwriting. Born and raised in Port Huron, I'm here for consideration for the open appointment for the CMH, uh, board. Um, one of the things about me, born and raised in Port Huron, went to Port Huron High School, went on, uh, to college and got my master's degree in school social work, came back home, worked at CMH about a year and a half before I got appointed to, uh, behavior interventionist for the school district, and now I'm on my fifth year as an administrator at Central Middle School. So one of the things that I do there is I work with children with IAP focus, uh, and we work hand-in-hand with St. Clair County CMH. So that's with, um, Mobile Crisis Unit, wraparound services, providing those things in and out, and people coming and working with our youth. Um, I also have been, uh, football coach at Port Huron High School for 12 years, varsity, um, done a lot of different sports, uh, coaching, and then, uh, I, uh, was one of the original people that started Athletic Factory in town to work with students on teaching them how to get to college for whatever sports that they do. Uh, but my big thing is that I have a lot of different angles in the community, um, and see the fact that the mental health aspect has with our students, young adults and above, and would love to be considered to be on the board. I think I come from a different demographic than a lot of the different people that have been on the board before, from, you know, various different reasons, but I think that I would have a different aspect that I could bring to the board, to what my background is. So I would love to be considered for that, and, uh, like I said, I think that my work with CMH, from being a former employee and then now working with them, um, in the school district, to see these different things that I would be great for the board appointment. Thank you.
And after Joseph, it'll be Jay Wetzel.
Hello. Thank you for your time tonight. Um, I wanted to enter my name, uh, for the Health Advisory Board. Um, I actually moved to Port Huron way back in, uh, 2006, um, not knowing anyone, just thinking I would be up here, um, working for the Times Herald for a couple of years. But that was 19 years ago, and, um, it's just been a pleasure just to meet so many different people of so many different communities, just going through so many different aspects of their life. Um, I've been on boards such as the Sparrow Pregnancy Care Center, Right for Life. I've had my own radio show out here and done many mentor groups, um, with You for Christ and so forth. But the main thing that kind of stuck out to me is that when this community is actually running together and in close knit, we can accomplish a lot of things. And Port Huron, I went from a place that I thought I was visiting to my hometown, I see it now. I got married out here, my children have all been born out here, and it's just been a, a blessing experience just to live among everyone. And I think that right now, um, more so than anything, more so than just qualifications or empty promises, we really need to see people bring our community together. My history is I have experience in both primary care for adolescents, adults, senior population as well as medical aesthetics. Prior to becoming a nurse practitioner, I was a registered nurse, working in surgery, the circulator, and scrub thereafter in the emergency room, and then the intensive care unit at Port Huron slash McLaren Hospital, as well as Lake Shore Surgery Center. I became a registered nurse in 2010, acquiring my ADN from SU4, and immediately going to U of M Flint, acquiring my BSN. While in the process of finishing up my BSN, I was fortunate enough to become a recipient of a federal grant to become nurse practitioner, which was based on academics and experience. Again, that was at U of M Flint. While at SU4, I was co-chair of the ADN Nursing Committee in 2009 to 2010, as well as representative for the ADN Student and Nurse Faculty Advisory Committee during that time. And I am currently also a member of the American Association of Nurse Practitioners. So I've been a nurse practitioner since 2015. I'm also a business owner in the area for the past four years. With the primary care, I've worked in both Port Huron and Yale, and I can assure you I know a lot of our health concerns within our community, which is ever-evolving. While working at my business, I continue, continued until January of this year, for the past 10 years, working for National Diagnostic Services, doing health assessments for various companies throughout Michigan, as well as the fire departments throughout the state of Michigan as well. The reasons that I'm interested in serving on this committee is largely because of the community impact regarding health, our local health issues, and appropriate health education. And I believe that I would be able to give a perspective that would enhance any health-related field knowledge that may help guide decisions based on evidence and best practices, which in turn may potentially influence policy within our community. And I think that's probably all I really want to say. Thank you for your time.
Next will be Joseph Hayes. If you would, because I didn't get your name right, would you?
That's fine. Good afternoon, Marion Stewart. Apologize for the bad handwriting. Born and raised in Port Huron. I'm here for consideration for the open appointment for the CMH Board. One of the things about me, born and raised in Port Huron, went to Port Huron High School, went on to college and got my master's degree in school social work, came back home, worked at CMH about a year and a half before I got appointed to behavior interventionist for the school district, and now I'm on my fifth year as an administrator at Central Middle School. So one of the things that I do there is I work with children with IAP focus, and we work hand-in-hand with St. Clair County CMH. So that's with Mobile Crisis Unit, wraparound services, providing those things in and out, and people coming in, working with our youth. I also have been a football coach at Port Huron High School for 12 years, varsity, done a lot of different sports coaching. And I was one of the original people that started Athletic Factory in town to work with students on teaching them how to get to college for whatever sports that they do. But my big thing is that I have a lot of different angles in the community and see the fact that the mental health aspect has with our students, young adults, and above, and would love to be considered to be on the Board. I think I come from a different demographic than a lot of the different people that have been on the Board before, from, you know, various different reasons, but I think that I would have a different aspect that I could bring to the Board, to what my background is. So I would love to be considered for that. And like I said, I think that my work with CMH, from being a former employee and then now working with them in the school district, to see these different things, that I would be great for the Board appointment. Thank you.
And after Joseph, it'll be Jay Wetzel.
Thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to enter my name for the Health Advisory Board. I actually moved to Port Huron way back in 2006, not knowing anyone, just thinking I would be up here, working for the Times Herald for a couple of years. But that was 19 years ago, and it's just been a pleasure just to meet so many different people of so many different communities, just going through so many different aspects of their life. I've been on boards such as the Sparrow Pregnancy Care Center, Right for Life. I've had my own radio show out here and done many mentor groups with You for Christ and so forth. But the main thing that kind of stuck out to me is that when this community is actually running together and in close-knit, we can accomplish a lot of things. And Port Huron, I went from a place that I thought I was visiting to my hometown. I see it now. I got married out here, and my children have all been born out here, and it's just been a blessing experience just to live among everyone. And I think that right now, more so than anything, more so than just qualifications or empty promises, we really need to see people bring our community together. We're living in a time where so many fractures in our relationships that this is a very, very important time for appointment. So I want to, I want to step into this role and not only just bring expertise in doing research and so forth, in journalistic integrity, but also I want to bring close-knit relationships throughout the entire community. Thank you for your time.
I'm Jay Wetzel from St. Clair. I've been in St. Clair County for about 40-plus years. I submitted my application for the Health Advisory Board, and I thought you might want to know a little bit about me. A lot of qualified people out here sound really good. And it's a little embarrassing to toot your horn, so bear with me here. I've been a registered nurse since 1995. I have multiple specialties. I've worked in ICU, CCU, open-heart, emergency. I've done some mental health. I worked in cath lab. I've worked in the community with the Area Agency on Aging 90 up in Tower City. I've done home care. I've done home infusion and more. I would say, do you have any questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, well, that's it. I tooted my horn enough. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was it. Is there any more citizens that wish to be heard? I can't hear you, Dawn.
There's one more.
Okay. And then you're up. And I definitely can't read this one. It's doctors. It's the doctor's handwriting. Dr. Steve somebody.
Dr. Stephen Smith.
I should know that.
Sorry, I'm late today. So as I said, my name's Dr. Stephen Smith, Advisory Board of Health, District 5. Thanks for all of you that are here for these meetings and our Advisory Board of Health meetings to represent our community. Thank you to our Board of Commissioners for all your work, your dedication, and oversight for our county, and our Health Department, the doctors, the nurses, and their staff. And of course, to our Advisory Board of Health members, thank you for all you do. Just to be brief, I just want to introduce myself. I'm a chiropractor of 30 years, 25 of them here in St. Clair County. This is where my wife and I, a registered nurse of 30 years, raised our five children. And I'd just like to say that if our, ran up the steps, excuse me, if our elected commissioners should reappoint me to the Advisory Board of Health, I would continue to dedicate my service to all of the residents of St. Clair County to the best of my ability, with insight and guidance on the important decisions made by the Health Department and our county commissioners. And I just want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and holiday season. I hope to see you in 2026. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, at this time, any other citizens wishing to be heard? Okay, we will continue. Start at your side. Carrie, any updates?
I have no updates. Thank you.
John?
Nope.
Steve?
Nope.
Okay. We have no updates today. We have no conceptual illnesses that I'm aware of. So we're going to move on to old business. 6A, Community Adolescent Health Center Oversight Contract Approval for Dr. Carley, which was tabled. Since you guys all got the information that he does not want to have the position, we also got further information from Liz King. Do we have any discussion on that?
I would move to remove that from the table and then take no action as he's withdrawn his interest.
So we're just going to remove it?
I'd remove it. If it needs to be brought back up, we can.
Well, we did receive three letters on that. Does anybody want to have any discussion or just a motion to remove it from our business?
Just a motion or move.
Fire is a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor for removal?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that has been removed. We're going to go to new business. 7A, Environmental Health Fee Schedule Revisions. Can I have a motion to send that to the full board?
I'll make a motion to send it to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion? We did have, and he's not here, might not be here tonight, but I thought the fees were very reasonable. I think we're, do a very good job with that, so I would definitely be supporting this. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, McNaughton Book Plan Subscription Renewal. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Commission on Aging, reappointments. Can I have a motion to send that to the full board?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay. 70, Commission on Aging, 2026 Service Contracts. That was pretty extensive. There was 278 pages. I went through an awful lot of it. And as far as I know, Carrie, there's not much difference. There was an awful lot of meat and potatoes in there, but it's same as previous, correct?
The majority of them, yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to send that to the full board?
Motion to send it to the full board.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I've got a question. I noticed that Section O under the Millage Attachment indicates that service providers agree to not use county assets, including funding through the senior citizens' millage to engage in any political involvement unless prior approval has been given by the County of St. Clair, Michigan. I'm curious, first, does that prior approval mean approval from the Board of Commissioners? Carrie Dino?
So that is a new section that's been added, so we have not navigated that yet. So if you would like that approval to come to the Board, then that certainly could happen.
I would think that would be something we should probably discuss. My other question was also related to that Section O, that new, that new section. What is supposed to happen if a resident were to complain that the millage funds were used to engage in some kind of political involvement? What is, what is the next step after, after that?
So we would have to investigate and look into that complaint, and if it truly was used for political activities, then those funds would either have to be reimbursed back to the county, or we would not reimburse them to the agency for funds spent.
So it would be the administration that would be responsible to conduct an investigation?
That would be my belief, yes. We would look into that.
Thank you.
And I think, Carrie, you'd be looking in that too, possibly. If we do have a concern, which we did have this past year, and that's what brings your questions, I believe, and so hopefully that doesn't happen again, any party, whether it's a Republican, Democrat, or anything in between, we should not be in that tech business with our Commission on Aging. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, 70, I believe, I'm getting a motion, send the appointment, the applicants? I believe we have three right now. Send that to the full board?
I'll make a motion to send it to the full board.
Can I have a second? Any discussion?
I've got a question. If we voted to not send these appointments through to the full board this month, would they be placed back onto the agenda next month?
If that's what the Board would like, then they could be. If no action is taken this evening, then nothing would happen to it until the Board asks for it to come back forward.
So essentially, the applicants we have to this point would all move to full board, and that's, at full board, we'd make a final vote? Is that the process?
That's the motion on the floor right now.
We're not narrowing it down tonight. We're going to send them all up and then take the vote. We don't have ballots tonight for that purpose.
Correct.
This particular one, I believe, is because of a resignation, and we now have a vacancy on the community mental health, so that's why we have this on the agenda. The normal appointments for the community mental health is done in March, so we'll have some ones we'll be addressing in March.
My concern is that Lisa's not here due to a medical emergency, and I know that she has an interest in voting on an item that's on her own agenda, and I know her constituents have an interest in her voting on those things as well, so that's my concern.
We're just moving it to full board. No vote on the actual placement, so that would be, give her an opportunity to be here for the vote.
Lisa should be here for next meeting, as far as I know, not that I'm aware that she won't be.
I don't know that Lisa will be here at the next meeting either. I'm not sure.
Okay, I believe you could raise that concern to the Chair at that time, and if that is a major concern between the majority of us, then we could potentially.
Certainly accommodate Commissioner Beeden if she has issues next week. She's not here, as she advised us today. I don't know what the status will be next week, but we can deal with that appropriately at that time. I would agree with you that we want to encourage and facilitate commissioners to have the opportunity to vote on matters that they have an interest in.
Thank you. Could we do an individual vote on that question?
Next week?
Right now.
Yeah, we can.
Thank you.
Just restate the question. What is the question? So I'm.
It's a roll call vote.
Oh, on the, on the full board? Oh, okay, that's fine.
Make sure I understand. We've got a first, we've got a motion and a second to send this to the full board, and your request is to have a roll call or?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote. Any other discussion before the roll call?
Has Lisa expressed interest in having comments today? Do we know?
She can't attend because of an exigent circumstance today. I don't know if that'll persist till next week. Maybe Carrie knows something. I don't know. I'm assuming that it will resolve. If not, we'll deal with it next week.
Well, she's not here because of a medical emergency. This is an item on her agenda. I know she has extreme interest in this item. She has expressed interest previously in making comments on this item at this meeting tonight that she's not here for, as well as being able to vote at it at the next meeting. And I don't know if she's able to attend at the next meeting either.
Do you see an issue, Carrie, with somehow precluding her comments that she would make tonight at next week's meeting? You think that's?
If she's not here, it will be an issue.
Next week, right. If she's not here next week. But assuming she's here next week, that would resolve, and otherwise, we can then decide whether to adjourn it or table it or whatever.
Right. And if it doesn't go through to the full board today, it will come back up in January. Is that right, Carrie?
Yes. If you would like this in January, we can move it till then.
Thank you.
I'd like to have an opportunity to complete these if we can, and if we need to adjourn it next week for some reason, we can do that as well. That would be my position.
Are there, what are the known, does it cause dysfunction with the Health Advisory Board to delay it till January? What are the consequences therein?
They're not, they just, those openings stay open until they're filled. They have a lot of members on the board.
They have a quorum regardless of.
Myself like to take care of business. If Lisa's here, I don't believe we're going to have a concern, but then Lisa could easily type a letter up with her concerns.
We're still on Item E, right? This is still on?
Yes, yes, Item E for the Community Mental Health Board, because we have the resignation. So we're going to have an appointment potentially. We have a motion and a second to send it to the full board, to appoint some, someone at that point to fill the vacancy. And if Lisa can't be here, or possibly she can get us an explanation of her concerns, we can take that in consideration, or potentially at the full board, you'll be running the full board meeting, Steve, and then at consideration, and the County Commissioners, the seven of us, or six of us that will be here, will then take a vote to either table it or actually take a vote at the full board. But we do have a roll call for this to send to the full board now.
Commissioner Angie?
No.
Commissioner Trowlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
No.
Commissioner Vandembach?
No.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. It's a tie vote, so that means it's a no vote, correct?
Correct.
All right. Okay, this one's done. It's potentially, would this be on the agenda or just going to be forwarded to January?
Yes, to be, I believe reposted as an agenda item. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, it'll be in January then.
It'll be under old business in January.
All right, moving on to 7F, Health Advisory Board Appointments. Can I have a motion to send those to the full board?
I'll make a motion to send it to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we have a roll call vote on that as well?
Definitely.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say I have the same concerns about Commissioner Beeden.
I have the same question. Are there consequences of not doing it now? Is there consequences of delaying it to January?
Well, if they're not, the reappointments would be to start in January, correct? They can still attend, still do their December meeting. They have a quorum. We would probably want it for final action the first week of January, so they could then make their meeting in January, which would be after that.
So a month's delay doesn't make it dysfunctional?
So long as we make the appointment the first week in January before the next scheduled Health Advisory Board meeting, we'll have people in place.
Potentially, we can make them both final in January, see where the roll call vote goes. I've got a question, Gary. The way I understand it, at least in township, if you have sitting board members, if they do not get reappointed, they hold that seat until it is reappointed. I know that's how it works on Planning Commission in Township, that until that vacancy is held or someone reappoints, they hold that seat. I believe I'm correct.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it, what the procedural rules are, but generally, when a seat goes vacant, it's vacant. And if it's not filled, it remains vacant until it's.
Well, here's where we may have a concern. The community mental health, just one position. On the other one, it's four positions. And now we will have a, if we don't take action, potentially final action on the first week in January, then that means that we cannot have a community advisory board or health meeting in January because there will not be a quorum if we do not fill those seats.
I have no objection to it being on the first, final action to being first week of January. I would also note there's another issue with the ABOH appointments too, though, in that we received two applications after publication of the agenda. I know those two people would like to be considered. This, if we were to make the vote, the final action vote in January, then those two applications could be added to the agenda in a much easier. They were added. They were tonight. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. Thank you. I know it's difficult.
Yes, Steve.
My inclination would be that these terms are defined by the regulations and the expiry as stated, so I would disagree that they just continue. It's a term for a certain period. If not reappointed, they don't get it.
We had an issue when I was Township Supervisor in Riley, and the person held the seat, and he was actually the chair on the Planning Commission, that he held that seat until we were able to fill that seat.
Planning Commission is a statutory, and I believe what you're saying, so there must be a statutory provision that says that this board is. Or Planning Commission's as opposed to. Yeah. Gary, do you know of any provision under the County Commission Act that would suggest these terms would continue on? I've not seen any. No, it would be just the opposite. Okay, thank you.
I'll have to look into it myself, so. Leave your correct.
Just know what you find out.
So on this, any other discussion?
Well, are we going to?
A roll call vote. Same thing what you just had, to either have it put to the full board, yes or no vote, and then it'll go potentially to on the agenda for final action for the committee meeting in January, the first Thursday.
What's the date on that? I guess we should ask Tom, because you're not going to be anymore.
It'll be the 8th if you approve your meeting schedule. That's on your Ways and Means Agenda.
And what date is that?
The 8th.
The 8th, it's actually the second Thursday, because the first Thursday is the first.
Yeah, and the Board of Health never meets the first week of a month. It's always like the third or some, third week of the month.
Third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday. So that should be fine.
So, so to be clear, like if it's on final action in January, there's no dysfunction?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Angie?
No.
Commissioner Trowlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeller?
No.
Commissioner Vanden Bosch?
No.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. It's a tie vote, it's a no vote. It'll be up for final action in January. All right, no new business at this time. Do we have any other human services matters? Seeing none, information only. Can I have a motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Stand adjourned.
Let's call the judiciary public safety committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Angie?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden? Commissioner Trowlow?
Present.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Zeller?
Present.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vanden Bosch?
Here.
No citizens to be heard. Do we have any updates from any commissioners?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
All right. Support, we get support.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, moving on to, I have no citizens to be heard again. Any updates from commissioners? I've got one on the radio tower. I did get in contact with Motorola. And had a feverish conversation with a young man that was trying to sell more stuff that he can't get put in. And.
More stuff he can't get put in, please.
He can't. They're just so slow, inept at best. I told him, I go, show me some progress in the projects we've already gotten done. Because we're just adding two towers with existing towers there. All they have to do is put, but dealing with radio engineers has put a new, pushed me to a new level. I thought civil engineers were hard enough to work with. I know, I know. And now radio engineers are, they've topped the list for me. Yes, sir.
What this relates to is prior to the new board forming in the fall of the election, we swept some money from the ARPA funds into some tower builds for the infrastructure for central dispatch down river essentially. And at the time, I was wishing we could have a conversation about maybe the northern part of the county. Well, that conversation, it never took place and it went through. And at the time, I said, well, then if we need to do towers, we'll just bond the towers. Because what happened years ago with the Stone Garden money, they started doing towers like out in K-Pac in a phase. They ran out of money, phase one, two, four. Well, phase three was a tower in K-Pac, my district. They didn't build it, so we bonded it. And that's out there today. So then, kind of relates to what Dave is saying. My position was, well, this, it's very important to have radio communication for first responders, fire, police, all of that. There's a need, was a need down river, no doubt. You got the lake, she got that area, was needed to have upgraded towers. We put, I think, nine million dollars towards that.
I think, I just talked to Tina Bricker. I thought it was either five or seven.
It was a lot of money.
Yeah, a lot of money.
A lot of money. So a lot of money, and that's going to really jump that up as it should be. And then I was contacted by people from Motorola, the same salesman, I suppose.
Yeah, project manager.
Well, and I got with Dave because he's judiciary public safety chair. And said, hey, you know, this guy wants to add some scope of work to what they're doing now. Because they have engineers here in St. Clair County working on towers and builds and all this stuff for this build down river. But they could use the same people at the same time on an economy of scale to then also do the analysis for towers on the northern part of the county, which would be Carrie's district and my district. So I got with Dave and said, what do you think? And then Dave gave you an earful. He didn't think much of that idea.
They, you will be seeing it in January or February from Tina Bricker. I did, I sat down with Tina on it. And we're going to push forward with it in spite of their.
Push forward with adding scope of work, maybe?
Two more, well, two more, the two more towers for Burchville, not Burchville, Rockway and Yale area. And then along another, another booster for Kimball area.
And there was something up in, I think, Burchville too, but whatever that was.
Burchville got resolved with a new, we put a new amplifier in Burchville, right?
All right, so that was part of the discussion, but that's been resolved.
That was an MSP project, yes.
So, so that's where the kind of the background, what Dave's talking about, for those that weren't privy to some of this. And of course, some people weren't even on the board. We'll be looking at that in January to make sure we have proper coverage for the first responders and so.
But so far Motorola's put a slab of concrete in in three years, so.
And you're on top, you're on top of that, right?
Yeah, I'm really impressed with them so far, if you can tell. Yeah. And they have a meeting once a week, even if we need it or not, for one slab of concrete.
It's a nice slab, very nice slab, I mean, I don't know.
Moving on. No old business, new business, 2025 agreement between recovery court and Blue Water Day, Blue Water reporting program.
Motion sent to the full board.
Second.
Any questions on it?
Twenty twenty-six, correct?
Yeah, I forgot my glasses. Thank you. You are an engineer, you're good at reading. Any other questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, the 2026 agreement between recovery court and community mental health.
Move to send it to the full board?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, central dispatch advisory board reappointments.
Make a motion to send it to the full board?
Second.
Any questions on that one?
Yes.
Yes.
What is a buyer reboard?
A miss, miss.
You're supposed to read this.
Yeah, I'm not reading it that way because I can't really see it. I'm just guessing my way through it. I'm good, Gary.
Now I got a blind lawyer, this is great, this is great.
These are nicer than mine. We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Next, we're coming up to Mr. McMillan. Journal contract amendment for Image Soft.
I'll make motion to send it to the full board. It's fairly minimum cost, but I shall have a question for you.
Second. I was going to give you my glasses. I'm good. Okay. Yes, sir.
This, because we, it's kind of, it's minimal cost.
Agreed.
And I know Steve talked to you and he filled me in on it. But this isn't actually for the journal, this is for a subcontract, correct?
Correct, yeah, this is for, I'm sorry.
So how many more times are we going to potentially have this?
So this is that odd part of a contract, odd part of a project where there may be a few of these now. Because we are in the phase of our project where we're dealing with third-party vendors to do our interfaces. So this is a very routine contract. We have a line item in our budget, a hundred thousand dollars to deal with these interfaces that we have to pay other folks to do the work on their end to accommodate our project. So we may see some from the law enforcement information network from Lean. We may see one from Secretary of State. We may see one from the judicial data warehouse. There's kind of a handful of these folks we are interfacing with that have to do work on their end.
So you have the money for this, it's not coming out of our pot of money?
It is part of the contingency of the project.
It's already budgeted.
All right. That's all we got. You probably have something.
I don't have any questions for Mike, but I do have some information for the board.
All set for me?
Just Mike, and so this third party said, the heading here, it says, you know, amended, says a journal contract amendment. I mean, it makes it look like the money's going to Journal. You're suggesting it's not going to Journal, it's going to this other company, right?
Yeah, I, the Journal amendment, I didn't write it in there as that for the, for the agenda. It's really, yeah, it's, the money is going to I-3 verticals, which is Onbase, which is the third-party vendor that we use to house our documents and some of our workflows right now. It's converting that stuff over to our system.
Does it actually affect the Journal contract in a legal sense or is it just a project?
In no form or fashion does it, does it deal with that.
Poor choice of words. Okay, thank you.
One other question. You said we're going to be potentially getting a few of these. This one's about 10,000. What are we going to go get a 30,000 and a 40,000? And we exceed the 100,000, then I think we're going to have an issue.
Well, I don't, agreed. I don't think it's going to come to that. I, we have done a lot of these already. There, and again, there may be some that come down the road, but there's not going to be anything that exceeds that $100,000 mark.
Carrie, how to state what you want to make?
Go ahead, Paul.
Well, I just, so I appreciate that it's contingency. Is there any reason, I mean, does the money forfeit to a project manager if the contingency isn't used? Or does it revert back to the county?
It would stay with the county.
Is there any further questions for me?
I don't have any questions for Mike. Does anyone else?
No.
I do have some information I'd like to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Share with the board. Just for context, my Lucy was in preschool when this project was foisted on the taxpayers. She's now halfway through her seventh grade year in junior high. My stepdaughter has graduated from high school, graduated from college, and has been working in the private sector for three years since the inception of this project. We've been through three presidential terms. Project's going on seven, eight years in the making. Any private sector business waiting eight years on an IT project would be out of business by now. I suspected six months ago when they were asking for an additional $60,000 that we would see additional requests for additional monies. And here's another request for another 10 grand. I see on the cover sheet, there is a contingency fund noted containing $46,853.42. Yet we heard nothing about this contingency fund six months ago when they were asking for the additional $60,000. Also, district court was removed from this project six months ago. But now, six months later, we're getting a request for an additional $10,000 to remove district court from the project. The cover sheet states, and I quote, "The amendment is being, amendment, amendment, is being submitted for additional work that is required to remove district court from the project and for additional effort that is required to restart and complete the project due to the project being on hold for an extended amount of time." "The contract amendment is for 9660. There is a line item in the project budget for interfaces and no additional money is being requested." Six months have gone by since the last contract amendment and we are being asked for, quote, "No additional money", while also being asked to approve another $10,000 for another contract amendment, which is also for the purpose of, quote, "Restarting the project six months after we were told they would be restarting it, while also, back then, being told it never stopped." "The taxpayers have also been paying full-time court programs manager $80,000 a year plus full benefits to work on the Journal project since 2018. But I can't help but wonder what this person is doing while the project has, quote, 'Been on hold' according to the agenda documents." My understanding is that court programs manager also has an assistant now who's being paid between $39,000 and $52,000 a year. "The contract amendment requested six months ago was approved by this board by a vote of four to three. We were told it would be completed and delivered in June of 2026 and no additional money would be requested. But now comes a request for an additional $10,000 to remove district court and restart the project after the contract amendment from six months ago was for those exact same purposes." "Further, the contract requires our taxpayers to pay the Journal company $100,000 a year, every year, for yearly maintenance and updates in perpetuity. The state provides a system for free with free annual maintenance and updates. And here's the coup de grace. I spoke with the state court administrator's office yesterday. They stated their desire and likely coming mandate that all courts in the state be placed on the state court system. And when that happens, the Journal project is gone. We don't need it at all anymore because the court will be mandated by the state to be on the state court system. The state court system also updates its own system for free, not for $100,000 a year. So I'd like the board to consider those facts when thinking about approving this additional $10,000 request. Thank you."
Anyone, yes, Steve.
Just a bit of misinformation on the sense of beating a dead horse here. When we did this six, six months ago, this was an ongoing issue that was of concern to everybody on the board. The chief judge of the circuit court was requesting that we allow them to continue to pursue this thing for the court. And, you know, my position at that time still is today that it was, I think I held my nose when I voted yes on that, the four, three vote. I didn't like the fact that we're buying seven-year-old technology. I didn't like the fact that we wanted a Cadillac and we got a Hyundai and all these things we talked about. But the courts are standalone. I mean, we have elected officials that have authority to operate the things they need to operate without our undue intervention. And we have to, we have to fund them to what's called serviceability under the law. So this was something, I had a conversation with the chief judge, we had a conversation with a lot of people, district court, Linda, Mike, everybody. I've talked to a lot of people. Came to the conclusion that this is something that courts wanted. They're an independent branch of government. We do not micromanage the courts. We have to fund them to a level of serviceability. And this was a project that, that the courts wanted, so that's where I went with that. So I just didn't want to make it look like this board had decided to give Journal to the courts. Journal was selected by the courts under a different clerk, a different administrator, a different project manager, a number of things. There's a lot of changes, as you said, your kids are all adults, grown, moved out of the house by now, you know? And I get that. But I just want the public to know that this was something that the courts felt was necessary. I have complete confidence in our chief judge. In our court system, and I guess I'm still on, and that's basically why I voted the way I did. So that's all. I'll also consider in giving this extra $10,000 to a third-party vendor, not Journal, not the Journal contract, but to a third-party vendor that's already contingent funded for and necessary. So that's, that's why I would vote yes to support that.
Anyone else?
Of course.
Of course.
This does bring up concerns, so I don't know if Gary Fletcher would know or be prepared for this particular meeting. If what you stated was true, that we're going to be mandated into a different service that the state is going to require, the exit clause in the contract, can we just, the $100,000 annual, as long as they're doing the updates? If we exit, are we still hung on to that into, you know, forever? $100,000 a year? There's got to be an exit clause in there. If we potentially go to 2026 and then find out in 2027 that we will be mandated to be in the state system, are we going to be required to have Journal at St. Clair County?
I think I could pretty safely say that you won't have to pay a hundred grand a year for a service you don't need because you don't use the software anymore.
I'm sure there'd be an exit clause.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's an annual service contract, so, yeah, we'll make sure that's provided for. Make one more comment, Dave. This is the other thing in light of, you know, what Carrie's concerned was, this issue with the court was something that, that the court wanted. This issue was something that we did try to accommodate the court on. The state program, it was, it was, I talked to a lot of people too, and it was, it was indicated to me that what this platform did was it allowed the courts to draw in a number of things into one area other than just what the state had on their system. In other words, the state filing system and the state archives and all that. Yeah, state's going to mandate it for what they want for their purpose, but this was beyond that. This allowed the courts in one platform for ease of manipulating all this information to go out into all these different areas. So it was in addition to what the state might do. Now, I don't know, you may be correct, Carrie, you may be correct that, that the state program supplants that completely. I don't know, but that's not what I ascertained from what I was being told by the chief judge and the administrators and some of that. There was a broader platform to allow them to integrate all these things so that the people working on it could, you know, move through everything in one platform, so.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I don't know, I, yeah, so that was, that's the other thing.
This, this state-administered and/or mandated system, what's the timeline for that to be required?
There's no timeline.
Like, you said that they might be mandated to be required.
In the near future is what I was told by the state court administrator's office.
Okay.
Anything else?
The system, Steve, just so that you know, is the JIS system. It's not the MyFile system. The MyFile system's already operating in countless courts across the state. I've been working with that since 2010. JIS is the system that is the same, purports to provide the same services-
Coordination.
-as the Journal program. In other words, with one, you don't need the other.
And I don't know, I, I just don't know enough about it, and I relied on the court and administration to tell me about that. But you may be right now, I'm going to look into it.
How real is that mandate? I mean, does anybody know in the room how real that mandate is?
Mike, time to answer that question. If there's a, yes, you did. They want to know if there's a mandate to go to the JIS system, and if so, when it is, I think that's-
I guess my question, Commissioner Angie, is who'd you speak with? Was it Jim McGrail?
I spoke with the Region Six Director, Jim McGrail.
You spoke with Jim McGrail, and I've just been texting Jim McGrail. There is no mandate. There is nothing on the horizon. Oakland County right now is the next county in the hopper, and they are three years away from any kind of solution. After that is Ottawa, then Saginaw, then many other counties before us. So if it's going to be a mandated solution, it is not mandated. You can talk to Tom Boyd. Tom Boyd had a conversation with Chief Judge West recently, within the past month and a half. It is not a mandated system.
It's not ma, it's not mandated right now.
It's not mandated right now.
Jim McGrail told me yesterday on the phone that it would be mandated by scale, and also that a committee convened by scale was just generated a 75-page report that was published two days ago.
The Alternative Funding Commission.
They're asking the legislature to codify it. In other words, to make it law.
We right now, in the Circuit Court, have a system that is held together by Band-Aids and rubber bands. Any day, this system can, can die, which means we are left with no system in our court. If they mandate something in 10 years, they mandate something. But right now, we need a solution. We need a solution for four years.
Have you got us on the list to be in line for the JIS system?
There is no list. There's no list to get on.
That's interesting because Jim McGrail told me a completely opposite thing. Jim McGrail told me that I would need the court administrator, or, Jim McGrail told me I would need the court administrator or the chief judge to put us on the list for that.
The only way, the only way that you can get on a list is if you decide to not go with the system that you have. If we say that we're not going to go with Journal, then we get on the list, which means we get in line. Right now, we're still under contract with Journal. We can't say those things. We'll be in default to Journal. We owe them $2 million. We cannot get on a list until we decide not to have a different project.
Not true.
What's our backup? Because we talked about backups, backup to Journal, because a lot of us had misgivings about Journal. And you tell us we were, we were, we discussed going, getting a backup. In that, you said that was, we were, you were in a contact.
If the Journal system fails, and I, and I have had conversations with the state, if the Journal system fails, we can certainly go on the state system. The problem is, we're last at the trough for the state system. There is a whole handful of folks in front of us to get on that system. Right now, they're building a system in Oakland County that they're going to use. They're, they're building the system in Oakland County because that's their largest user, right? They're going to use that system to push out to other counties. So they, they have to get, we're three years away from that. We need something now. And the project's going very well. We are moving along.
At a snail's pace.
No, it's not a snail, a snail's pace. We've talked about July, 2026, we've talked about that, and we're still on track to do that, probably a bit sooner. It is going very well.
Question for Kerry. Now, we have, from what Mike says, we have the budget, a long time ago, way back when it was budgeted, there's a contingency fund there. Why is it that he has to come to the board to expend a contingency fund for a matter that's covered? Is that within the contingency or not? And what's our policy on that? You know, off the top of your head.
This is, I'm sorry, Commissioner, this is a, this is an already existing contract for about $42,000. Because the additional $9,000 will bring it above the $50,000 threshold, it does have to come back to the board for approval.
Even though, even though it's within the contingency and already funded.
Correct. Because it, it's a contract amendment that changes that original contract above and beyond that $50,000.
Our administrator confirmed that. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? We've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Amended letter of agreement between Mental Health Court and Community Mental Health.
Motion to send that to full board.
Second.
Any questions on that one? Thank God. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Information only, the 2026 MDHHS state ward chargeback rate.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
At this time, I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Angie? Present. Commissioner Beeden, Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Zeller?
Present.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Torella?
Present. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have no citizens wishing to be heard. Is there any updates? Nope. Good. Any conceptual initiatives? Thank you. No old business, new business. Item 7A, Environmental Health Appeals Board reappointments.
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, landfill office cleaning contract for Janatize It LLC.
Make motion to send to full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, Parks and Recreation Commission appointments.
Motion to send that to full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. D, 26, or 2026 survey remonumentation, that word, grant application.
Make motion to send to full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item E, Airport Resolution 2542, Airport Sponsor Contract Design, Construction, Obstruction Removal Phase One.
Make motion to send to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, Vendor Contract, Meaden Hunt Construction Administration Airport Obstruction Removal Phase One.
Motion to send to full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item G, Columbus County Park, Genoa Contracting Change Orders.
Make motion to send to full board.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like an explanation on this, if you would, please. Because it is in my district, so just tell us the work that's going on. That way you know you had a purpose to be here tonight. It's $31,803 we're looking at, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's the, it's for two different steps on our Columbus Ops Center. We're adding an operations building at the Columbus County Park, long overdue. And during the process, this was a engineered kit, the pole barn that we received. And so these are two additions that we had in our budget to be able to do. And we wanted to add a ceiling, which is part of it, which is $16,103.59, and then the lean-to portion of it, which is an enclosure. So it was supposed to be just a lean-to, but we, after talking with staff and looking at the, the layout of the building, this would best be suited for lawnmower and gas equipment storage. So that's the request to enclose it for $15,700.
Thank you. And I appreciate you doing all the work on the parks that are in my district.
You're welcome, Dave.
All right, good. We had a motion, one, two, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eight is a Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other environmental work matters this evening? None. Information only for the-
Need to have a motion to receive the park financial doc. You want us to make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, receiving file packets?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We need adjourned.
Call to order the Community and Economic Development Committee. Roll call.
Commissioner Angie? Present. Commissioner Beeden, Commissioner Torella? Present. Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Present. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item three, citizens to be heard. I do have one. I have John Reed.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to apply for the position with the Metropolitan Planning Commission. Part of my family moved to Port Huron in the 60s, and I visited here often over the years. I moved there, I moved here the first time in the mid-'70s, met my wife. We moved to California in 91. In '07, we went to North Carolina, summered here at Fort Grassard, and we are now permanently here since '17. I worked at H. N. Block 15 years, retiring a second time this year. I was, I was a financial analyst and accountant most of my career. I worked for healthcare, banks, land and condo developers, CPA firms, renters, power plant, retail industries. I was also a publisher at one point. My work included business plans, forecasts, budgets, GAAP, financial statements, system design, estate plans. And I worked for both the largest companies and, and some of the smallest. I believe I can be valuable, be valuable to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, St. Clair County Commissioners, and St. Clair County. I'm John Reed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard? All right, seeing none. Item four, updates. Are there any updates? No. All right. Item five, conceptual initiatives. Are there any conceptual initiatives? None. Item six, old business. Any old business? None. Item seven, new business. 7A, Metropolitan Planning Commission appointments.
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? Any discussion that's not static?
Jesus, that was.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item eight, other community and economic development matters? None. Nine, information only. Any commissioners have any information?
Ten, I'll make a motion to receive and file packets.
Support.
Any discussion? Do we have a discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All of us opposed? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Calling the Ways and Means Committee to order. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Beeden, Commissioner Torella? Present. Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Zeller?
Present.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Angie? Present. Item two, additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. Are there any? Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number three, I have no citizens to be heard. Number four, I don't have any updates. Does anyone else? Number five, conceptual initiatives, there are none. Number six, old business, there is none. Number seven, new business. A, 2026 Board of Commissioners Meeting Schedule.
Motion sent to full board.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, Audit Services Contract, UHYLLP.
Make motion to send to full board.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, Imaging Software Installation and Training. Is there a motion?
Make motion to send to full board.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. D, Land Bank Authority Reappointment.
Make motion to send to the full board.
Second.
Discussion?
I do have a concern, and of course, this can be addressed in 2026. We still have Mr. Jeff Bohm on there and Ms. Pauline Rep. So we can look at that in 2026, if there's any concerns, if there's potentially any conflict interest and decisions that might be made. Because he is, they're both very involved with the Economic Development Association which we have severed our contract with. So I'm concerned about that. But this is going to go to the full board, and we can address that in 2026.
Is Jay DeBoyer still on there too? Because he was on that, I think, wasn't he? I'm going to check that real quick. He's not. Okay, he was off, okay.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E, Retirement Board Appointment and Reappointment.
Make motion to send to full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F, NeoGov Software Renewal, 2026.
Come on, let's out here a little bit. We're doing all the lifting.
Make motion to send to full board.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. G, Contract for Tax Collection Auditing Services.
Make motion to send to full board.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H, Resolution 2543, Authority to Execute and Accept Documents Regarding the Liquor License.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? All in-
Says that we're going to be changing, the new chair will be there, and then, of course, the new administrator. That's about all that, that kind of, that's the whole thing, we just get new names on there to be able to take the action we need to take.
That's how I saw it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other Ways and Means Matters, hearing none. Number nine, information only.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.